Commissioner Caprini. Commissioner Smiley.
Here, and I just have to leave at six. I put it in that.
Oh, okay, thanks. Commissioner Meyer. Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Sweets. All right, we have quorum. Next up is adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda with the addition of a discussion item about our minutes at the end of the meeting.
Discussion. Uh, can I get a second on that motion?
Second, Commissioner Olson.
All right, I will call roll on that vote. Commissioner Rockwell. Commissioner Caprini. Commissioner Smiley.
Aye.
Commissioner Marwa. Commissioner Meyer.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Sweets. That motion passes. Next up is accept, uh, excuse me, acceptance of the November nineteen twenty twenty planning commission committee, the whole minutes. Would someone like to move approval of those minutes?
I'll move this Smiley.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second, Olson.
Olson. All right, seeing no discussion, I will call roll on that item. Commissioner Rockwell. Commissioner Caprini. Commissioner Smiley.
Aye.
Commissioner Marwa. Commissioner Meyer.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Sweets. That motion passes. Uh, next on the agenda is item four, which is consent item on the land sale of twenty parcels along West Broadway Avenue. Address seventeen oh six to nineteen twenty West Broadway Avenue, twenty one oh nine James Avenue North and two thousand nine Illian Avenue North. Staff is Bree Golding.
Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, yes, my name is Bree Golding and I am presenting twenty parcels. That's off of West Broadway. Um, nineteen of the parcels are in a corridor six and one is in interior three. Um, the sale of these properties to construct a sixty-nine mixed income building with twenty townhomes. Um, as proposed is consistent with the Minneapolis twenty forty plan.
Thank you, Bree. Is there any discussion on this item or would one of the Commissioners like to make a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
That's a Smiley. Is there a second?
Olson.
All right, any further discussion? And Commissioner Smiley, just to clarify, you're moving to find the land sale consistent with the comprehensive plan?
Uh, yes, thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you. All right, uh, then I will call roll Commissioner Rockwell, Commissioner Caprini, Commissioner Smiley.
Aye.
Commissioner Marwa. Commissioner Meyer.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Sweets. That motion passes. Thank you, Bree. All right, next up is, far for discussion is, uh, item number five, Lowry and Second, addressed at one twenty-five Lowry and twenty-five twelve Second Avenue Northeast. Staff is Shanna Sutter. Uh, Shanna, I will hand over the floor to you.
Thanks very much. Good afternoon, planning Commissioners. Um, I have before you today a new residential project. Uh, located at one twenty-five Lowry Avenue Northeast and twenty-five twelve Second Street Northeast. So see on this plan, the properties are currently zoned I two, which is the medium industrial district. The site is just under an acre, um, point nine nine five acres. It's located in Ward one and the Marshall Terrace neighborhood, uh, Jason de Botino, which is just south across Lowry. The subject property, uh, is located at the northwest corner of Lowry and Second, and it is, um, there are two existing commercial buildings there right now. The applicant is proposing to construct a new six-story residential building with one hundred and ninety dwelling units. Um, there'll be a combination of studio, alcove, one and two bedroom units. Along Second, uh, Street Northeast, there would be seven, um, townhouse style walk-up units. And then along Lowry, um, the applicant is proposing, uh, lobby space, coworking and a fitness, uh, room, uh, for onsite amenities. Lowry Avenue Northeast is a goods and services corridor, and we'll take a look at the future land use map, um, in just a moment. Uh, you'll know parking would be located on the first floor, um, and then also there would be one level of underground parking as well. The site is designated for corridor mixed use and the built form designation of corridor six. The proposed building would have, uh, FAR of four point two nine. Um, with the built form designation of corridor six, uh, and the proposed corresponding built form overlay district. Um, there would be a maximum, uh, floor ratio of F A, or FAR of three point four. Um, the applicant, at the time of application, was proposing two FAR premiums. Um, in corridor six, the applicant would qualify based on the proposed text. Of course, that's not final yet. Um, would allow an increase of that maximum FAR by point six five for each bonus. Um, the applicant is proposing to comply with the inclusionary zoning policy with the city of Minneapolis. So a minimum of sixteen dwelling units, um, at or below sixty percent AMI would be required based on the one hundred and ninety units. Um, so eight percent of that rounding up. And then, um, also the applicant has stated that they would comply with the environmental sustainability, um, FAR premium. Um, I think they were looking for a little bit more detail, um, what was, uh, going to be officially adopted by the city council. So they could kind of address, um, more specifics, but they, they do have information for us as well today. So if both of those bonuses are applied, um, the maximum FAR would increase to four point seven. Um, and the applicants will below that. So staff has identified, uh, two land use applications for the proposed project. First is a petition to rezone. Um, and so the applicant has a couple of options. With, uh, this particular designation of, of corridor mixed use, um, commercial zoning certainly would be appropriate. Um, because the property is already industrially zoned, they could also apply the industrial living overlay district. Um, that would allow for some, uh, non-residential uses. Um, and, um, if they did apply for the industrial living overlay district, uh, an additional application for a conditional use permit to allow for residential dwelling units would also be required. And then site plan review is the second land use application. Um, so staff has noted some policies related to the comprehensive plan specifically around the future land use designation. Uh, the goods and services corridor, which is Lowry, and then also the built form designation within the memorandum today. And we're really seeking feedback specifically on the three items listed on page four, but certainly, um, here to get additional feedback. And the applicant can also, um, provide additional information as well. So staff is, uh, looking for, um, some thoughts around, um, the potential rezoning to allow for residential uses. Um, second is that, um, if I come back to the future land use map, you can see Lowry Avenue Northeast is a goods and services corridor. But the future designation, um, future land use designation of corridor mixed use does not require commercial, but it encourages it. Um, the applicant is not proposing any commercial or retail uses, um, within the building at this time. Um, so we're looking for feedback related to that. And then, um, there are two elevations that are for the parking garage. Um, so this north elevation, this shows the driveway elevation, so you actually would only see, uh, from the public alley, this first floor. Um, and then this is also a public alley along, uh, the west elevation. So we have expansive blank walls where the enclosed parking is located. So just looking, thinking about, um, what are some mitigation techniques, also recognizing that the property is still adjacent to mediumly, medium industrially zoned property. Uh, so that concludes what I have for you, uh, and I am happy to turn it over to the applicant to add anything additional.
Thank you, Shanna. And if the applicants can introduce themselves, uh, before they speak, that'd be fabulous. Thank you.
Yeah, this is, uh, thank you, Shanna, so much. Great job. Uh, good evening. My name's Danny Perkins. I am one of the owners of one twenty-five Lowry and the lead developer. Um, thank you all for allowing us to present our project, which we are excited about. I'm going to have my architect, John, present the building. Um, he's from Doran, who's going to be, Doran's going to be helping us design and build the project. Uh, but we look forward to having a, uh, productive dialogue and looking forward to hearing your, your guys' feedback. So, John, you can take it away.
Great, thanks, Danny. Um, I'm John Ferrier with Doran Architecture. I'm the president of Doran Architecture. And, um, you know, our design inspiration for this was industrial living. And the goal of the design is to draw from the surrounding industrial character while creating a building that contributes to the life and vitality of the neighborhood as well. Um, so if you look at, um, the perspective, the southwest perspective, um, view from Lowry and Second, that's sheet A three point four. I'm just going to talk about some of the different, um, materials and colors that we're showing. So on the primary corners, we're showing a rust-colored, um, standing seam metal panel. And the idea of that was to emulate, um, Corten, uh, which is a, uh, industrial material. Um, and to emulate that. And despite the simple forms of the building, um, we believe the hung metal balconies and the metal panel seams will create strong shadows. Um, and virtual intrigue as well as some texture to the facade of the building. Um, the field colors, um, of white and gray are, um, a simple white fiber cement panel. Um, with strategic reveal lines at panel joints. Um, we're using a stark white material as one of the field colors. And this draws inspiration from contemporary Scandinavia, uh, modern Scandinavian design influences. And like I said before, the reveal lines between the panels will create some interest and some subtle shadows showing some depth on the facade. Um, the other, um, fiber cement panels are two-tone, um, two colors of gray. So the, um, dark gray is used at the secondary corners, um, to provide a complement to the rust and white without distracting from them. And some contrast as well. And the light gray accent panel adds variety and prevents the building from feeling monolithic, so it brings down the mass of the elevations. Something we paid particular, um, um, that we looked at particularly is the streetscape. So the overall design of the streetscape seeks to bring the building down to more of a human scale. So we're showing, um, defined areas on the building exterior for commissioned local street art to support local artists. Um, in addition, we're showing walk-ups along Second Street and amenity spaces along Lowry to help activate the street as well. Um, the amenity space show, shows sun shades and the, um, walkouts show, um, shed roofs to bring down, it down to that human scale as well. Um, we're, we want to use a stacked bond, um, brick in lieu of traditional running bond brick. Um, around the first floor, and this will create a bold, modern feel. It'll also differentiate us from, um, some of the other buildings in the market. The corner element has an eye-catching design that calls out and clearly identifies the main entrance for the building. Um, Shanna talked about, um, some of the bonuses that we're looking for, and one of those bonuses is for environmental sustainability. Um, and we do plan for the project to achieve a recognized green standard. We have not identified which strategies we're going to do to achieve that as we, as Shanna said, we need a little bit more clear definition. Um, from the city council, what's, um, would qualify for those bonuses. And, um, I can get into some of those strategies if you want me to, but I'm excited to hear your thoughts on the building design.
I think in addition to, um, yeah, sorry, this is the other applicant, uh, Danny Perkins. I think in addition to, um, Shanna's, uh, the request on, on feedback. I'd like to also, if you guys can, uh, give some, some, um, some ideas and feedback on the, the public art, uh, the streetscape. Which we think is kind of a cool opportunity to showcase local artists and, you know, keeping them refreshed. And maybe it's every few months or six months, putting an event behind it. And then makes, uh, the walk-up units on Second and how you guys, uh, envision those and how, how do you guys feel about those as well? So. Thank you all.
Thank you. Um, Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments for staff or the applicant regarding this item?
Uh, yeah, this is Commissioner Marwa. I can, uh, talk a little bit to the public art piece that the applicant just asked. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, I'm having a little connectivity issues per usual. Um, well, I was, I was just curious how you're planning to do that rotating art and like, are you working with a group? Um, kind of how are you planning to find the artist and make sure that they're connected to the community? Just to want to know, um, what your thoughts on it, or if you want any thoughts from, from my side that I work in this realm, uh, to some degree as well.
Yeah, I think the idea is, uh, is definitely open. Um, uh, you know, we initially had the idea, but we wanted to hear you guys' feedback. I think we would definitely look for, um, um, a, a local, uh, organization within Northeast and the R State District to, to help execute those local artists. And, uh, take their ideas and, you know, help, help execute that, but I would, I would love to hear your, your thoughts as well.
Great, yeah. I mean, I would suggest definitely working with Forecast Public Art. They're based in St. Paul. I'm sure you know them. Um, they've been doing this for developments around the Twin Cities and around the country and world at this point. Um, I would, I would, you know, frankly, kind of consult this out to them and make sure that they're doing, they have a great due diligence process on it. They do a lot of kind of, um, requests for proposals from artists and they really have this down pat now. So I think if you're going to go this avenue and you want to see this really work, I would, you know, shell out the money to them to, to actually really make it, um, meaningful. Those are, that's my suggestion on that.
Yeah, yeah, no, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Uh, Commissioner Smiley and then Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you. I just wanted to talk to the, uh, one of the feedbacks that staff had asked about the commercial piece of this building. And, um, I generally like the design of the size of the building that are along Second and Lowry, so that corner. Um, and it seems to me that it lends itself very well, uh, to any commercial. Some commercial space, at least on Lowry, if not on, um, not on the second, but on Lowry. Um, I would say that considering what's around in this neighborhood, I personally would like to see commercial development in this area. Um, because it seems like it's a bit of, um, there's, there's definitely room in this area. Let me put it that way. Um, as far as the blank walls go, uh, on, uh, the two sides, um, I would like to, I mean, I see that there are the two blank walls. They're very large and I would like to hear from the applicant if they have, uh, given it some thought about maybe. A different design of, of the material in that side that will give it, um, that would differentiate it and make it. Not so monotone that you can see the blank wall is, I don't know, like some kind of a, uh, like you can do things with the material itself. Uh, short of putting a mural on, of course, and or any kind of, uh, landscaping or green space that. Can potentially mitigate the blank wall effect.
So I can address the blank wall, um, statement. So we have looked at, um, providing some windows, um, throughout that area to bring some natural light into the garage. So that is something that we would definitely entertain.
Uh, Commissioner.
I think we're also open.
Oh, go on.
Sorry, I was, I was going to say, yeah, I think we're also open, you know, maybe wrapping a part of that west wall with maybe a mural, um, just to. Uh, keep the kind of the art feel maybe going a little bit, because it is a long space and I think Shanna did bring up a good point. It is, it is pretty blank going down there. Um, it'd be to the commercial piece. I mean, maybe I could just speak real quickly on it. Um, I mean, as we know, you know, retail i- is struggling right now and we believe this area, um. Really needs people and density, and we believe that this project will ultimately act as that catalyst and help support the existing retail. We don't want to be in a situation where, uh, you know, if we do add commercial on Lowry and it sits vacant for years. Um, it just doesn't help create that active use that we're trying to accomplish. So, um, hence why we initially didn't put the commercial in there. And we see more value of, uh, you know, creating an active use and that streetscape and, and, uh, having, having that density.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Absolutely.
Sure.
So, uh, with the, um, as it relates to the, uh, you said windows, uh, providing light to the garage. Are you saying that the rendering that we're seeing is not the most updated then?
No, the.
It is.
The news came about in response to the comments, um, regarding those blank walls. And as Danny said, I, I agree that we could do something. And providing a clear story window, um, to bring some light into the garage is always something that, um, that we can do definitely. So that was just one of our ideas, but we're open to more ideas as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Meyer and then Commissioner Rockwell.
In regard to the commercial space, I feel like during the pandemic, um, we should, uh, be flexible about that sort of situation like this one. Where it's encouraged, uh, but not strictly required. Um, I think, you know, um, we should stick to that and, uh, and, and not require it. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Meyer. Commissioner Rockwell. Sam? Are you muted?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, now we can hear you.
All right. Are you hearing me twice or no?
No, just once.
Okay, very weird. Um, uh, I can hear myself twice. Um, question, when we have commercial suggestion, uh, does that include like office space or is that just retail, Shanna? I can't remember where we are on, on kind of interpreting what that means.
Thank you, President Rockwell for the question. So because of the, um, corridor mixed use designation, we would say that commercial zoning is appropriate. Um, but it's not required. So then we look more towards that goods and services corridor language. Um, which is intended to identify where commercial uses should front. So in this case, you know, if there were commercial, we would expect that along Lowry, not along Second. And then, um, uh, in addition to that guidance, a mix of land uses found there would include, it says commercial uses, um, to be considered. So just very generally speaking in the zoning code, you know, offices would fall within, um, a general category of, um, uh, of commercial. So it, it could be considered for office. Um, we have had some early conversation, um, kind of from the neighborhood association earlier today. Um, with some, um, just an email that kind of was going around, but I, I anticipate we're going to get a lot more feedback from the neighborhood soon. Um, with just an idea of, of having some non-residential uses in this development as well.
Yeah, I mean, thanks, Shanna. I, I think, um, in response, all right, so with that context, you know, I, I, um. So I, I acknowledge retail is, is uncertain, uh, uh. Right now and in the future. I think that having mixes of uses, however, is just valuable in its own right. Um, for multiple reasons, right? I mean, I think we, for, for, uh, commercial uses, for retail uses that do exist. Having not just like people living in a place, but people living and working in a place creates a more round-the-clock environment. Um, and I understand that things are difficult during the pandemic. Um, I hope you're going to build this building to last a long time. Um, and if you do, our job is to plan not just for the moment, uh, that we're in, but for that long time. Um, and so, uh, you know, I recognize the difficulties folks are facing right now, um, but, but, uh. But we, we really should only be taking that into consideration on sort of a baseline feasibility level, not really on whether it's hard to do. So, you know, I think there is, there, I would encourage you to look, um, at potential commercial uses that, uh. You know, that, that, that aren't retail. Um, can you have a, you know, a dentist's office or a, you know, real estate agent's office or whatever, right? I mean, something that has a little bit of a storefront presence that brings a little bit of activity. Um, uh, that, that, that starts to, or that kind of maintains that, um, uh, flow of people in a more round-the-clock way. Uh, so I think that I just wanted to weigh in on, on that.
Thank you.
President Rockwell, can I ask a question regarding just the commercial?
Um, yeah.
If, if we, if we went away from the traditional commercial space and how, if we maybe envision, uh, the walk-up units on, on Second to be more of like a live workspace. Where the barrier to entry to start, you know, uh, a business for local entrepreneurs or even artists. Would, would that suffice in your guys' mind from a, a, a long-term perspective of, of looking at this project?
You know, I, um, the live-work units are, are tough. I think we've seen a number of those come through and like, some of them work and some of them, when I walk. By them are, uh, just units that have, uh, the blinds down, blinds down. Because they're going to set up to be more commercial and the people who are in there, uh, actually living there, like, don't want to live behind a storefront. And so they just get the blinds down. Um, and so I would be, um, you know, we saw something recently, and of course, I can't remember where the project was. But where they had something structured as, as a live workspace and the way it was built. Uh. Was such that you could separate out the retail space. It was like a, you know, it was a townhouse. It was multiple levels. And you could separate a row, you know, kind of whatever, whatever we'll call it, uh, walk up. And you could separate out that ground floor so that if the person who was living there didn't want to be activating that space. Um, then it could be, you know, you effectively could like partition the spaces and have somebody else rent it. Um, so, you know, I mean, I, I, I don't know, there, there's, you could see on the, you know, the very bottom as we're looking right now at the ground floor here. Like on that very bottom space, if your lobby area was a re, was like a, a commercial space that could connect into that first, uh, unit. Or like, or didn't have to connect into that first unit to have some flexibility. Maybe you have somebody who wants to be doing something, but maybe you keep the flexibility to, you know, again, have a, I, I don't know, whatever the office space is. Um. I, I, I just think that there's, you know, there's something to be said about having neighborhoods that are not kind of bedroom communities. And we are a city and I also recognize that, you know, if we tell you, you gotta have a cafe there, like, that's, that's not realistic. Um.
Right.
Uh, right now, uh, but, uh, I don't know.
Thank you.
John, and our height on the first floor is pretty, is pretty tall, correct? So, I mean, potentially we could even take Sam, or President Rockwell's, like, idea of maybe even creating like a loft style on those, those live work, potentially live work spaces. And, and have, uh, and maybe design those that way. So.
Yes. Yep, absolutely.
There's, there's room to be creative, right? I think there's room to be creative and, and I'm not trying to bring kind of a strong arm of regulation. But I do think you're, you know, you're building here in part because of the, you know, the attractive area created by the entities along Lowry Avenue and along Second Avenue. And I think, um, you know, not just kind of taking advantage of those, but kind of helping build that as well. I mean, you are building it by bringing people in, but you know, the neighborhood is attractive, not because it's just people, but because there's like cool stuff to do. Um, and, and, and there are, and you know, and there's just activity. There, you know, let's keep the cafes with a lunchtime crowd, right? I mean, it's all of that stuff, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Rockwell. I don't see any other comments, so I guess I'll run through mine. I, I think, um, in my notes here, I have, uh, I was curious about how you're, um, joining the vertical and horizontal, uh, standing seam product. It seemed in the rendering like it's, you know, perfect, but as we all know, computers make things like easy and it looked, as though there might be a tricky detail. I'm wondering what that, um, will end up resulting in as a detail. So I just, I just a call out to pay attention to that. Um, I, I, uh, in your presentation, you mentioned that it kind of has an industrial feel, but I actually don't, don't really feel that at all. I don't think your building looks industrial, like, using some Corten on the corner doesn't really make it industrial. And the, I think the white panel, uh, cement board product is kind of, um, distracting. And, uh, and the seams on it aren't going to create shadow lines. They're just going to look like every other, um, cement board panel building in town. I, I think you need to do something with that. Um, I don't know if it's the color or the fact that the top lacks any sort of noticeable cap, so it just feels. But, um, I think that's detracting from your project a little bit. Um, I note that I hope all balconies, whether recessed or projecting. A note that I hope all balconies, whether recessed or projecting, are at least five feet deep. The shed awnings, I think the detail will make or break whether they look good or cheap in flimsy. So maybe pay attention to that. I think the blank walls are a concern and I'm kind of over murals. Murals are kind of like the, the, they're overdone and they're often not done well when they're just being done to satisfy a blank wall provision. So I'd rather see the windows, something more architecturally that speaks to that rather than just murals. As for the streetscape art that's called out in the elevations, again, I hope it's more engaging and interesting and not just not just we painted a few walls and had an artist do it. And then after a couple of years, it petered out. So I think having a detailed plan for that is important. It's hard for me to kind of weigh in on site plan review because there's no site plan in the packet. So I definitely would be interested in seeing what the site plan actually looks like, since that's one of the applications you're asking for. The, let's see my notes here on the live work unit idea. I think just labeling it live work isn't going to cut it. I think that project Sam referenced, if I recall correctly, they almost, they were actually like two two-story, whether it's a lofted space or not, but it was actually two-story units. So they could have a retail public facing place on this, on the access point and then a livable small space above. So I think a way to separate that would be key if you're going to call them live work. Otherwise, I don't think it really counts and meets the goal of what they're trying to get to. Let's see, I thought I had a couple more notes here. Oh, and Shannon, I was just curious about the material percentages and where we're at in regard to that. If you know.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Lukey. Unfortunately, I did not get to the point of calculating those out. So I do not have those available today. But we will encourage the applicant to meet or get as close to meeting the standard as possible.
That'd be great because at some point it just looks like a lot of cement board panel and it's kind of uninspiring. And as we know, we like to consider buildings as a street view object and and it seems like a lot of it seems back of house. So I would just say maybe give some thought to that, especially the finishing details on how it's treated. So that would be my comments in that regard. I see no other additional comments. Shannon, did we get all your questions addressed?
Yes, absolutely. Thanks, everybody, for your feedback. I really appreciate it.
Fantastic. Thank you very, very much. Up next is item number six. Thank you. 305, 315 and 317 Oak Grove Street Apartments. Staff is Hillary Dvorak.
Sorry, I'm here. I'm trying to get the, trying to get the PDF pulled up. Can you guys see the PDF?
We see a site plan right now.
Okay, in aerial view?
Yeah. Yeah, I should say that, sorry.
No, that's okay. It's just not showing up on my screen, which is strange. Okay, so this is the Oak Grove Street Apartments at 307 to 317 Oak Grove Street. On the aerial photo, you can see the project highlighted in blue there. It's currently a surface parking lot. This is located in the Loring Park neighborhood. I'm just gonna flip to a couple other slides here. What they are proposing to construct is a new six-story, 62-unit residential building with 37 enclosed parking spaces located in two levels of below ground parking. Access to that enclosed parking is off of Oak Grove Street as there is no alley on this block. This, the properties that are up in Clifton are up quite a bit on a hill. So there's a retaining wall along that south property line of this site. There will be a mix of studio one and two bedroom units in the building and they will comply with inclusionary zoning in this development. On the ground floor of the building, there will be a lobby, common space and fitness center. Dwelling units occupy the first through six floors. Then there's an additional common space located on the sixth floor of the building with a rooftop deck. And I'm just going to go to an image that they produced for this. Sorry. So here's kind of a bird's eye view of the of the site. And you can see up here, here is that sixth floor amenity space. And then there is a roof deck that is on the sixth floor and then goes up to the seventh floor. The parking requirement for the development is one per one unit. However, the site does qualify incentives. So they are required to provide 31 spaces and they have 37 enclosed parking spaces. This site is located in the Shoreland Overlay District, which limits the height of of all buildings to two and a half stories or 35 feet. There is a typo in part of this report or the memo. I apologize. The overall height of the building is 85 feet. So they do need a conditional use permit to increase height in the Shoreland Overlay. And I'll, as all of you know, the Built Form Overlay District text amendment went to the biz committee on Tuesday. We'll go to full council next Friday. And so the memo is written using those new guidelines because this development would come in after 24, after January 1st. So in the quarter for Built Form Overlay District, height is limited to four stories or 56 feet. Again, the building is six stories or 85 feet. To increase height, an administrative review will be required. They can qualify for two or they will need to provide two height premiums to go from the four to six stories. We will still need to discuss what premiums the developer will select for this project. Since things were changing between planning commission and full council, we didn't go through that exercise, not knowing which premiums would be available, but they do know that we have to do that. The maximum floor area ratio in the quarter for Built Form Overlay District is 2.0. To increase that, in the Built Form Overlay chapter, one needs to go through the administrative review. This site will qualify for three administrative premiums at a point four value each. So the the largest FAR that they can get through the premiums is 3.2. They do, the current FAR of the development is 3.49. So variance will be required to increase above that 3.2. I did list out the different gross floor areas of the buildings at the 2.0 and the 3.2 and then at their 3.49. So you can see the difference in the memo of what the square footages of the building are. There's a difference of approximately 5,000 square feet from the 3.2 to 3.49. It's approximately half of one floor plate of the building. And the development does require variances on all four sides, not for the building itself, but for staircases, balconies, ground level patios and a dog run that are located in those required yards. I'm just going to show you. So in this case, in the front, this walkway is wider than what would be allowed and the walkway that leads up to the front door is also wider than what's allowed. I'll just come down to the site plan. Sorry, just waiting for my computer to catch up. So here you can see, you know, the staircase and these staircases need a variance because they're too wide for our permitted obstructions. The dog run then also needs a variance for permitted obstructions. These ground level patios would require a variance for ground level obstructions. And then the patios in this area for that are adjacent to the common space in that ground floor would also require variances of their yards. So I've listed the applications that are required for the development in the memo. And then what we're looking for feedback on is just wanting to have a conversation about the FAR of the building and the need for the variance over the 3.2. And then just interested in your thoughts on the setback requests for those elements of the development that don't meet our permitted obstructions, size requirements or allowances, I should say. So that is all that I have. I know I didn't go through the whole packet, but the applicants are here and I'll let them or I can flip for them or if they want to add, if they want to share the screen or take over the screen and go through the presentation themselves, they can. So Katie and Doug, if you want me to run it or if you want to run it, let me know. And then I'll just be here for questions.
Yeah, I think when it gets to turn to run through the project, we'll share a screen between slides.
Well, I will stop sharing my screen then. All right. Thank you.
Scott, are you here? Do you want to introduce this? This is Julie.
I am here. Yeah, this is Scott. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Yeah. So I'm one of the two developers of the project along with my partner, Jeff McMahon, who I believe is dialed in as well. And we don't want to take up too much of the time, really just want to hand it over to Julie and Katie and Doug to run through it. But just for a little bit of context, as everybody here probably knows, this is a site currently owned by the Women's Club, which we're under contract to purchase. We haven't yet purchased. We're in escrow with a closing set for some time in 2021. And I think it's obviously a great location in a nice neighborhood. We're very excited to work with the Women's Club folks. They've been very supportive and involved in the process. Our goal is to really make a quality building here that contributes to the neighborhood and is built for the long term. We are by nature not a group that builds things and sort of leases them up and sells them on to somebody else. We're long-term holders. So we care a lot about quality. It's one reason we hired Julie's group and aligned 100% with their vision, which I'll let them share, but just want everybody to to kind of know our approach is to build something really high quality for the long term, add to the neighborhood and also help out the Women's Club in the process.
So I think I'll just do a brief introduction. This is Julie Snow from Snow Cry Like Architects. I just wanted to add on that we're delighted to be working with Scott and Jeff because of the the vision that they have for this building and the design and the quality that they invest in their projects. So when we began our study, we did a good amount of research into the neighborhood architectural fabric and to the neighborhood identity and found the citizens for Loring Park were quite explicit in their master plan in their aspiration for their community being Minnesota's greatest gathering place and Minnesota's best urban living experience. Excuse me. So with those things in mind, we were really interested in creating not only wonderful units and a wonderful building that's an asset to the neighborhood, but also creating a social experience along the street. So I'll let Doug kind of walk you through some of the ideas that we have for this project.
Thanks, Julie. So the Loring Park neighborhood, first I want to start out saying I'm going to keep it relatively short. I know you've all looked through the package and I want to save a lot of time for questions. But to start with our general approach, the Loring Park neighborhood is, has a ton of history behind it and is full of beautiful historic architecture, including just the general residential fabric to some of the beautiful historic churches. And at the same time, with its diversity and cultural amenities and its pivotal location in the city is a huge part of the future of the city. And for that reason, our approach has been to be extremely sensitive to context, but in a way that is forward looking and contemporary in spirit. So I want to start by talking about the massing. This is a view looking along the south side of Oak Grove Street. And our building is located here at six stories. It matches in height with the adjacent Oak Grove condos to the east. And we've carved a terrace into the sixth floor so that the building steps down as it approaches the shorter apartment building, four-story apartment building to the west. As you look to the north side of Oak Grove Street, the buildings range from four to nine stories. We feel like with the massing of the buildings in the general area of our project that our six-story building will will fit in quite nicely. From a character standpoint, the neighborhood is made up in large part by very simple brick punched opening apartment buildings that are animated with ornamental balconies and whose social life is really informed by this idea of the stoop. So as you, as you walk along the neighborhood, you oftentimes see people waiting for a ride or chatting with a neighbor in front of these stoops. And these were some of the images and ideas that were in our mind when we were thinking about the building concept. So this is abstract diagram of the building. It starts with the idea of a simple masonry volume that has a regular pattern of windows across it. And then it is animated with a playful composition of balconies. Carved into that masonry volume are two outdoor spaces. One is a six-floor terrace that looks out to Loring Park. And the other is a ground floor porch-like space that allows residents of the building to spill out from the common spaces and interact with the street and the neighborhood. This gives you a sense for the building on site and with and within the context. The primary, the building has a fairly simple material palette. The primary building material is a warm, light gray masonry that is meant to evoke the Indiana limestone that you see as a common accent material in many of the neighborhood buildings and also as a primary material in some buildings in the neighborhood. And then that that masonry material is complemented by a bronze toned metal that's used for the balconies and for some of these metal accent areas in the project. And that the the sort of tonality of that, those bronze balconies and accent areas is meant to draw in some of the warmer tones of the surrounding brick in the neighborhood. Here's another view looking along Oak Grove Street at the other corner of the building. And then looking a little bit closer, you can see some of the detail around window openings and the perforated metal balconies. And then zooming in even quite a bit more here, some of the the materials that we're considering for the material palette, the primary wall material and the balcony material. And then I did, I did want to sort of finish on this image. We talked earlier about the porch-like exterior space that's sort of connects the building commons with the streetscape. This is a more detailed view of how that would feel and how this building would connect with the streetscape. So with that, I'd like to open it up to questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions for staff or the architects? Not seeing any yet. I guess I can start. Oh, Commissioner Meyer, you have a question?
Yeah. So in regard to the Shoreland Overlay ordinance, you know, building height and FAR doesn't affect water quality. So I don't think you know, those are particularly important to it, but I, I'm just wondering if you've done anything like rain gardens or other things that actually are relevant to water quality. I would hope to see a higher standard for that in proximity to bodies of water.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that. One of the, one of the premiums that we would be looking at to to achieve the the height and FAR potential increases is the environmental sustainability ecological premium. And one, we're early enough in the design that we don't have this fully, fully developed, but one idea is to use the setback area around the building for to to collect or reuse stormwater or to create urban habitat on the site. So we're interested in using the the site not only as a resident amenity, but potentially as a sustainability driver for the project.
Commissioner Meyer, do you have further questions or is that it?
That was it. Thank you.
All right. Well, then I guess I can ask my questions. I wanted to know for the setbacks to the interior yards, how close are your patios to the different side yard and rear yard setbacks?
Let me pull up a good drawing to talk about that. So on the south side, we have, there's a retaining wall, about a 15-foot-tall retaining wall before you get up to the kind of the properties on the next level. On that side, we have 10-foot-deep patios. And so there'd be five feet to the property line or the retaining wall from the edge of that patio.
Okay.
And then on the east side of the property, we have a dog run. And that goes all the way to the property line. One thing we did want to point out with the dog run is that the adjacent building, the adjacent apartment building has its driveway next to the dog run. So there's another approximately 12 feet from the edge of the dog run to the actual building, which we feel like helps a little bit as opposed to the dog run being right on top of a window. And then looking to the west side, where we have these resident amenity areas, those extend to the property line as currently drawn.
And is there any buffer between the amenity area and the neighboring property? Or I see there's kind of like planted areas between them on your property, but is it just, is it a fence? Is it nothing? Is it?
There's a retaining wall between the two. So that would be the buffer as currently drawn. The one thing that I would like to point out is we're pretty early in the landscape design and are open to kind of tuning some of these things and widths and depths in order to get this to work well for the neighborhood, so.
Okay. Well, I guess I just want to weigh in on variances right now identified by Hillary. Five, six, seven, eight, and a little bit of nine. I actually think all of those are acceptable given the intended use. I think it's in keeping with the spirit of the ordinance. And I feel as though their adjacencies are, it's just common sense, actually, to require them to be smaller makes them unusable and also creates dead space. That benefits no one. And I think that they have a lot of opportunity for water infiltration features in the green spaces between. So I'm not concerned about that. Particularly in regard to the front of the building, I actually want to applaud the design because I feel as though it feels very welcoming and community-focused and also more accessible for people with mobility issues in terms of actually being able to, as you go up the ramp, it looks as though there'd be space at the door to actually stand or sit or whatever next to somebody instead of always having to be in forefront or behind. And I think that's really nice to be inclusive. I think the intent again is so people don't just cover the front of a building with a really wide slab of concrete and then create a really dumb space. And this space is not dumb. It says a lot. And so I feel as though this is creating layers and depths and opportunities for gathering, small and large. I can even see in the rendering. It's a really successful rendering. So I think those variances just make sense to me. The only thing I would suggest is it looks as though the balconies at my own pet peeve are only about four foot deep. And I would ask the architects, given that we would be, I'm fine with having the patios on the ground level be deeper to accommodate growth even in the side yard setback. And, or setback, would you be open to also having at least a five-foot-deep dimension to the balcony? So that way, those are usable spaces. It seems though that's the threshold between it being used as miscellaneous bike storage versus actual people. As I say, a person and a chair, not a person or a chair. So that's, that's it. I do want to say the material palette seems really nice and clean. And the punched openings, the fact that the doors and windows kind of have a same rhythm is kind of refreshing and nice. And I'm going to see this in a magazine in a couple of years. I know it. So I just, I think it's a great project all the way around. I think they've managed the site really in a respectful way to, given the context, and provided opportunity for more people to live in that community, but in a welcoming, approachable way. So I support that. And I see now that Commissioner Rockwell also has comments. I will hand over the floor to him.
Yeah, very, very brief. I just wanted to say, you know, a lack of comments is not because of disappointment with the building. I think this is a really nice project. I think it feels good. It feels appropriate. I think certainly high FAR in Loring Park area makes a lot of sense. And I'll piggyback on Commissioner Lupe Pierce's comments about the setbacks. I think that makes sense. So I appreciate the building and I appreciate bringing a more distinctive look, simple but distinctive to the architecture. It's a neighborhood with a lot of important architecture and I wish we saw this kind of stuff more broadly. So thank you.
Commissioner Olson, you have some comments or questions?
Yeah, just quickly, I guess I agree with what all the other commissioners have said. I used to live across the street from here. So I think this is something that we don't see very often, beautiful design like this. So I'm excited to see this application.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Hillary, were you looking for any additional feedback or did we address all of your areas of concern?
You both, I mean, one or all of you commented on the setbacks and the FAR. So those were the two areas that we were looking for feedback on. So I appreciate that.
Fantastic. Well, have a lovely rest of your evening and thank you for coming.
You guys too. Thank you so much.
Thank you all for your comments.
Next up is, I'm number seven, the Excel Energy Marshall Operations Center at 3356 Marshall Street Northeast. Staff is Aaron Hanauer.
Hello, commissioners.
Hello, Aaron. I hear you, but I see Hillary's project.
There we go. How's that?
Still Hillary's project.
Okay.
Not that I don't like looking at it, but I probably should look at what you're going over. There we go. Thank you.
Very successful. Great. Thanks. Thank you all. For Excel, we have, I just want to note that there are some addendum sheets that you likely received from the applicant and from some public comments. Excel's proposing an 86,000-square-foot three-story operations center with office and training space on an eight-acre site at the intersection of Marshall and St. Anthony Parkway at the northern edge of the city in an industrial part of northeast Minneapolis. And as noted in the memo and on the plan sheets, we have a major sewer interceptor line running near Marshall Street northeast that impacts where the building can be placed on the site. Applications identified a conditional use permit to increase the height of the building in the Shoreland overlay to three stories and site plan review to allow for the development. The building design applicants proposing mainly two types of nichihua for the elevations. And there is a precast concrete segment on the rear elevation. The main entrance, pedestrian entrance is at the south end of the building. And then I'll show in a different, another slide, the outdoor space that's proposed at the back of the building. Site design, as I noted, the building setback from Marshall, approximately 160 feet because of that sewer interceptor line. There's two, there's two vehicle access points, one on St. Anthony Parkway, one on Marshall. This has been a discussion with Public Works, the Park Board, and Hennepin County since Marshall Street is a, Hennepin County, since Hennepin County has jurisdiction over Marshall. We recognize that the site plan shows a lot of surface parking. And this has been a discussion point with the applicant from the beginning. The site plan shows 295 surface parking spaces. The maximum allowed for an 85,000-square-foot office building is 425 spaces. But the applicant notes that they, with putting the parking where they did, in part, in large part, was because of that sewer interceptor line, but then also trying to protect the trees that line St. Anthony Parkway closer to the river. I think the applicant can speak to their stormwater management plan that I do believe goes above and beyond, will go above and beyond the minimum requirements set by the city. And we'll also be discussing, and I'm looking forward to the commission's feedback, on this 30-foot landscape buffer between Marshall and the surface parking. And what, if this site plan and if this parking plan goes forward as you see here, what are the things that can be done to improve the site plan that gets built? All right, so staff is looking for feedback. First, I note this intersection at St. Anthony Parkway and Marshall is highly visible. They have a, just, here's a street view showing the site. But they note a site gateway. And I just, we're looking for feedback on what the commission would like to see at this corner as part of alternative compliance to have parking in front of the building. I'm just, throughout the idea of public art or something that would help soften that surface parking. But if commissioners have ideas, I know I would really appreciate it and I'm sure the applicant would as well. The other element that staff would like feedback on, I'm going to flip it one slide, two slides back, is Marshall Street Northeast. Mentioned there is, on the applicant's property, a 30-foot green space proposed. And the applicant is, has been receptive to working with stakeholders, those that I mentioned, Hennepin County and the Park Board and Public Works, on asking what we would like to see in that area. There are plans by Hennepin County to convert Marshall from four lanes to two lanes, from Lowry to 37th, that 37th being north of the property. And so they are willing to plan for a 10-foot-wide pedestrian bike trail on their property if Hennepin County would like to see that and if there's a pinch point that necessitates that bike lane go onto private property. The applicants also committed to a slight berm and plantings of trees and shrubs to help mask the surface parking that they are proposing. Okay, so just asking, are you supportive of this? Would you like to see it go even further and looking for ideas that you might have? We note in the public comment, or the comment request that we'd like to see of just hearing from the applicant's commitment to alternative modes of transportation with this amount of surface parking. And the final element, which I think has been kind of addressed with the addendum information, is there is this precast concrete portion of the building. They, with these, with this new drawing, I think have done a better job of breaking up that blank wall by either, if this is a type of glass or some punched openings within that to help soften and not just have a smooth concrete portion, but to dress that up even though not many people will see it. So that concludes my presentation. I'm going to make sure the applicant, Chris and Gordon, are you on the call?
On the call, too?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay. And commissioners, do you have any questions for me before I turn it over to Chris and Gordon with RSP?
I don't see any currently, Aaron.
All right. All right, Chris, I'm going to go back to the presentation. And actually, I'm going to get the one that you sent me here.
Yeah, that would be great.
And yeah, just, Chris, just let me know where you want me to go and I'll get there.
Okay, sounds good, Aaron. I'll introduce myself. I'm Chris Thompson with RSP Architects. And we are very excited that you're reviewing this project. It's been an exciting project, new piece for Excel Energy. And we have a very dynamic site, very large site here that is covered on two sides with a very large existing green space and canopy that does extend further to the south here. This is a very industrial neighborhood that we're looking to bring some charm and character to and really create an exciting property for office space that Excel Energy will have. Specifically, I think since you've had a chance to review the submission, I'm going to address four different points here that are related to some of the questions that Aaron wanted to get feedback on. And so I think what I'll do is I'll start with the landscape buffer section, Aaron. And he had shown you this piece and, you know, we're fortunate where we're able to have fairly large green space between Marshall Avenue and our parking space. We understand that the parking that's occurring for this site is, does not meet the norm and that we have some very unique site conditions that have really driven the location of the building and thus the location of the parking. So we're working with our landscape architecture team here to build up a buffer and add in a green fence, so to speak, with a hedge there, a continuous hedge. And we'll have shade trees here 25 feet on center to help shield that parking lot. Also, in this boulevard, we will have that bike path. Now, that'll also be walking or sidewalk space along with a bike path about 10 feet wide. And that will, based on what, well, it will be used for the local community and, you know, possibly a future route that could further help to connect this part of the city. So with that, that's a little more definition on the landscape buffer. There, we have been having discussion about the sidewalk located north of our driveway on Marshall. So we've provided this bike path and trail on the south side of our driveway, which is right in the middle of the property along Marshall. And we have decided not to provide a sidewalk on the north side of the driveway because of concerns with public safety being that there's an existing Sioux Line Railroad that runs east-west along the north side of the site. And currently, there are no sidewalks up there or pedestrian access. So we met with the Public Works Department and Hennepin County and they both agreed that that would not be necessary to add that sidewalk there. Getting to another one of Aaron's points here, the west elevation of the building, we are using some precast panels back there. And we are, I'll say we're early in the design here and we are working hard to try and break up this piece as listed in the requirements. And so we have some windows running along the second floor here that will be set back and mimicking that form, we're pulling form down from there that will be indented into these panels. And we're looking to use a darker color there. And likely, we're going to be working with textures there to see what we can do to really offset those indentations and represent this rhythm as it moves along the facade. Following those, each of those window indents, we have reveals that will travel up from each opening at the top and bottom to try and break up the top and bottom, you know, of that large rectangle. So our landscape team is also looking to see what we can use for vegetation and in front of that piece to try and integrate the building and the site. So, and the last piece is the parking that Aaron mentioned. We have separated the parking into three lots. And in an effort to try and minimize the look of the large, of a large lot, the lot to the rear of the building would be secured parking for fleet vehicles. And the other two would be for visitors and employees in the front. We will, you know, along with regular vehicles, we'll have parking for electric vehicles with charging stations. And along with the bike trail that we're developing out front here, we will also have space within the building for bike storage and changing rooms and amenities that are related to bike commuters that that I'm sure we'll have with this facility. And and so with that, I'll leave some time for comments here. Thank you. We look forward to all comments and 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 questions that you have.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you. First, I just want to acknowledge that XL has been a pretty good neighbor in this neighborhood. XL leases the XL Park to the Park Board for zero dollars. XL contributed the land for the St. Anthony Parkway next to this lot. So I just wanted to, you know, express my appreciation for that. That, you know, historical generosity, but I gotta say, I really, really hate this. The the parking, you know, completely enveloping the building on on every side is is so suburban and I think it's a failure of our existing policies. If if this type of thing is is allowed, I hope that we change that. So I I have a number of questions. My first one is, what is your anticipated peak occupation of this building? How many people would you expect to be in there at like the maximum years?
I don't have those numbers for you right now. I apologize for that.
Okay, I mean, that's something I'm interested in knowing, just, you know, comparing the occupation rate to the amount of parking that you feel that you need for this. I'm happy to hear that you are making some accommodations for bike commuters. I would encourage you to do as much as you can to financially incentivize with both carrot and stick to reduce the amount of people driving in. So you can charge for the parking instead of giving it away for free. You can subsidize bus passes. All number of things that that you could do. If you're interested in that, you can reach out to Move Minnesota. They have a whole program around that. So the the curb cut is something that I'm gonna, I believe I'm gonna have to review twice. Both here and then at the Park Board. So I was wondering if if both the applicant and staff can can speak to the to that request.
Chris, well, Commissioner and and applicant, I, yeah. Cliff Swenson has been involved from the Park Board with discussions. The initial proposal did show three access points, three vehicle access points. That's been reduced to two with with the communication with the stakeholders. And I can get more detailed of the specifics. I I know it's a big ask to have an access point on a parkway. But in this case, applicant Chris, if I believe public, the Park Board was not opposed to this submittal or this proposal as as shown that you have here in front of you.
I thought you mean the staff, you know, Cliff Swenson wasn't opposed.
Correct. Thank you. Thank you.
Did the applicant have more to add on that?
Oh, sorry, I wasn't sure which Chris we were talking about. Yes, we have been meeting regularly with the Park Board and yes, they are on board with that entrance onto St. Anthony Parkway. And we have also had regular meetings with the city and worked closely on the primary entrance on Marshall and that there's been way in from the county, as Aaron mentioned, and lots of discussion about that entrance as well. Being a three story office building, you know, falling under a typical office occupancy, there will be, you know, enough people here in this building that it will have a large entrance there on Marshall that will accommodate turning traffic and also truck traffic in and out of the site that we have worked to separate. So that's the the exit off of onto St. Anthony Parkway is much smaller and and would not be used by any truck or delivery vehicles.
You brought up the electric vehicle charging. That was something I was gonna ask about. I was gonna ask, you know, are you planning to create more demand for your your product essentially by promoting that? So so how many electric vehicle charges are you planning to include at the site?
At the moment, we have two of them that we'll be providing and you know, as you say, with XL Energy, this is an important part of of how they operate. And so those will absolutely be included. And also, to answer your earlier point, they do have a bus pass program that they use for their employees to help give them a break for frequent users. So we, you know, across the site, we are trying to do some environmental and sustainable items and certainly energy is right in there as well. So
How much do you subsidize bus passes?
I don't have the exact numbers. I just know that they have that program in place.
Last month, we put forward a staff directive to require or to to have staff come back to us by May with information of for a bird safe ordinance. Do you have plans to create bird safe glass in the site that's close to the river?
We have presented that to the owner and we are discussing it in the design of the project, yes. So there hasn't been a final decision, I'll just say.
Okay. All right, well, yeah, I guess those are my, those were my questions and I'll just reiterate. So I I've already started receiving quite a few emails in just general opposition to the project at the Sierra Club, wrote a letter today about it. So I I would just really encourage the applicant to reduce the amount of parking. And if you can, it would be so much better to have a a smaller multi-story enclosed garage for it instead of so much surface parking so close to the river. That's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Meyer. Commissioners, are there any other questions or comments? I'll, I'll start on mine then, since I don't see any others right now. Um, I did have a few. So first, you have the ten foot bike head lane that is being considered for the front yard, essentially. I'm wondering if there's, i- is it a combo or is it is it planned to be dedicated one of each? Because I have to say, I, I'm not digging these bike slash pedestrian lanes being combined. They're just kind of recipes for everyone to be in conflict with each other. So I guess I would say if it's, I would like to see it dedicated, maybe two separate things with some planting between. That way, people can actually walk without bikes running into them or bikes, people can bike without worrying that people are gonna stumble or walk into their way as they're biking. I think that the e-vehicle charging stations, I wrote that I had the same question as Commissioner Meyer in terms of how many, and I'm I'm kind of underwhelmed that it's two. Because I kind of feel like it's XL Energy. It might be a great way to demonstrate what you guys do by providing charging stations that provide energy to electric vehicles. So it just seems as though that needs to be increased significantly, especially given the large ask for the parking. I I'm not as familiar with bus routes over there. Does, is there a bus that stops near this site?
Not at, not at this corner. It's it's a little further away. Yeah, I think it's
Seventeen is close, right?
Does it drive past it or does it just kind of like come a few blocks away? I'm not, I'm just asking. I'm trying to.
It's, well, I think it's one or two blocks to the east of the site that there's a bus line that travels there. And as Aaron pointed out earlier, this, this is zoned industrial. So this is really a, as you're aware, this is a very heavy industrial area. So
And then the topography on the site, I was looking at the the survey and it looked to me as though where the south parking lot is, it's a significant grade change. Is that, am I reading it correct? Or I'm just, I'm just kind of hard to see because it's on a tiny little screen. But is that lower lot recessed then or is it built up or my, did I misinterpret the survey or what's all happening with the grade in this location?
That lot is is at grade with the first floor of the building.
Okay.
Yep, as are the others. So the two visitor entrance lots there are at grade with the first floor.
So that's all the same. So the front lot and the side lot are kind of at the same elevation, you're saying?
Yes.
So is the lot, is the building kind of being pushed down into the lot or is the, is the south lot being pulled up? I'm just trying to get a sense of if I'm on, if I'm driving down the street, am I, you know, because it didn't look in the survey that they were at grade necessarily. It looked like the site went significantly south, at least, or maybe I misinterpreted the survey, but at a glance.
It's, it is, it's a kind of a dynamic site. The building is on the the high point of the site and it drops to the west. And as you go to the south, portions of it drop down in the southwest corner. The site will also be largely regraded throughout as part of a project that happens before this for the remediation work that's happening there to prep the site under a completely different project. So
Okay. So I'm just, I'm just curious about how, you know, like in terms of where the, like, if someone stood at that intersection and took a picture of the site today, is the ground level where the parking lot is or will it be higher or lower from where it is now?
It's pretty close. It it, right now, it's deceiving because when you drive past it, it seems much steeper, as you can see there. Those are actually berms that are existing there from fly ash storage that was done quite a while ago. And all of that fly ash and all of those berms are being scraped away. So they will be gone. And then we will be graded. It, it will not be a noticeable step up or step down.
Okay. And then how Commissioner Meyer kind of touched on this a little bit, but was structured parking examined as an option? Or was it just kind of presumed that it would all be surf? And what made the decision to be, have three surface lots as opposed to one thing of enclosed parking?
A lot of these decisions came with that big red stripe that's going through the site plan right there, which is a sanitation interceptor line that we can't move or really get much closer to. So
Hey, Chris, this is Gordon Strom.
Yes.
Maybe I could comment on that a little bit. One thing we're trying to do with the parking and I don't know, Aaron, if we have the detailed landscape design, but we're trying to break up the parking as much as possible into separate islands and there's going to be spring gardens in there and we're trying to, you know, minimize the large surface areas. So that is one part of the design that we're trying to follow to minimize it plus hide it from Marshall. And like Chris said, there's where it drops off to the west, it's really not buildable. So it kind of forces to put the building where it is right now. And then we knew there was going to be a lot of parking. So we're trying to break it up into smaller pieces as much as possible and hide the pieces.
Interesting. Well, yeah, I guess I was looking at, when I looked at the site plan, it looked as though you could have maybe picked the back lot or the or the north, north of the building as a location for parking and gotten rid of it in the front. But it, I don't, it just, it, I don't think it's being, it's very successful at hiding it. I I think that it doesn't look that much different than a target parking lot, you know, with, you know, we have tree islands and you know, there's little planters at the, to kind of from the street, but everyone can see an ocean of of concrete. So I, I'm just, I'm not sure it's very successful. So I, I don't know. I do appreciate the, I don't know if it's a patio or terrace for the, I assume for the workers. I think that's nice. And I, one of my questions was, this almost has a feel of like a camp, like a corporate campus. And I know you have an existing retention pond in the northwest corner. So I was kind of just wondering, are there, are there going to be walking trails and opportunities for the staff or or whoever to kind of just get out and and exercise and, you know, be healthy? Or is that just gonna be a neglected body of water in the corner and and whatever?
Chris, I can comment on that. You know, we are gonna connect up to the St. Anthony Parkway walk pass and then there'll also be internal walking paths, too. We just discussed that with the landscape architects a couple of days ago. So, yes, we're planning on that.
Oh, good. Okay. So I, because I like to see the sites at least being maximized. I mean, you have this natural beautiful location and if you're being industrial, it's really a beautiful opportunity. It'd be nice to make sure you're maximizing that. And oh, one of my notes going back was, will the dedic, you know, the bike lane that I was fetching about earlier be able to connect to the to the bike paths that are closer to the river at all? Or protected future runs or whatever, just to kind of make sure that we're giving people opportunity. And then I had, I think somebody mentioned the rear lot. So the west was mainly for a fleet of vehicles, like XL's vehicles. Is that, did I hear that correctly?
You did, yes.
And is that, I just want to make sure though, that, so if that's gonna be out on the surface lot, are we gonna be seeing the addition of a fence around that? Or is it still gonna be just open to nature unhindered?
I don't think, the amount of fleet vehicles, and these are small delivery sized vehicles, maybe fifteen of them. They have not decided if they need to be fenced in for security or lighting and cameras will do it, but we're just designated them parking in the back. I wanted to make another point on the bike lane. When we talked to Hennepin County on Marshall Avenue, they're going to restripe this next year, Marshall, and that restriping will have a bike lane in it. I think in the future, they eventually want to connect this up to some ground, the grand rounds. But it's all hinged on, they have to redo the railroad bridge because you can't get underneath that. So it is really kind of a future, future project, but I think XL is looking to help out in any way.
Super. And then I just have two more kind of question comments. One was about the, Aaron had a question about that view corridor and public art possibility, whatever. And I, I guess I just would hope that it could almost be like a clean energy demonstration area, whether it's demonstrating technology or whether it's art demonstrating that. I mean, it's pretty sad that a high V parking lot has something, a little spinner that everyone knows now and could seem to find really fun, but we don't have any fun examples of that. Elsewhere, really in the city. So it might be nice if you, if you guys were kind of taking the lead in that, given what the building's about and kind of use that as an inspiration point. I think that would be both interesting and also it could be an opportunity for for beauty. So I, I'm gonna encourage that for for that. And and actually, I would say maybe at different places throughout the site. I mean, if we're trying to break up and and have the parking lot not read like a normal parking lot with normal tree islands, maybe, maybe make it feel more like a, you know, a really, you know, XL's trying to find ways to be more green and you're, you're in this green environment. It'd be nice to be a demonstration, you know, like different technologies and different art about it and and things like that. And lastly, I just wanted to touch on that west elevation. I actually found the rendering of it to be really striking and and I was kind of just bummed to find that it was windows just at the top and not just, you know, vertical glazing of some sort. just, you know, vertical glazing of some sort through the whole thing. So I don't know what's happening on the ground floor where we can't have windows. But I actually kind of wish that was the front of the building because it kind of has a nice, like, if those were windows, I would I think that just kind of has a nice balanced effect. It's really, I like the design and proportions of it if those were windows. So I just wanted to say, like, maybe, maybe, you know, consider, I don't know, you might probably redesign your building, but I think that that's actually very striking as a as a design. And I would encourage you to actually maybe try to get, I don't know what's happening on that ground floor where you can't have windows. So I guess I'm curious what's happening and then I would encourage windows.
I can take that, Gordon. It's I would agree with you. However, on the first floor, we do have Excel has some sensitive departments there that require additional security. So we're we won't have windows in those spaces for that reason. So we have really tried to. We all like windows in small spaces, right? So we've tried to kind of place that on the back side of the building where people won't see that, so to speak, and then accentuate the windows on the second floor to try and activate that that wall as well and break it up. So that's the reasoning behind it.
I think you're, whether it's through a texture or I would actually say encourage a darker material on the inset portion, giving it a recess so it has the shadow, the same shadow and the same depth as the window above would be helpful. And is it possible, Erin, to see the front rendering real quick of the building? And and yes, Commissioner Smiley, I'll hand it over in just a second. Yeah, I kind of wish that your your brick portion was that same design as the as the back, but with windows, like with those vertical elements, because it just it's so striking. And this just seems so like this could be anywhere, but that seemed a little more polished. So that's my little two cents. I'm going to hand this over to Commissioner Smiley and then Commissioner Olson. Oh, she just had to jump off. So Commissioner Olson, you're up.
Thank you. Just quickly, I mean, I agree with the commissioners who spoke already clearly about the parking. So I guess, you know, when you come back to us, wherever you land on the parking, it would be helpful to just have, you know, lay out the numbers for us so we could see, you know, those peak numbers and how that compares to the parking and the fleet vehicles and everything like that, so that we can have a good understanding of what we're being asked to consider.
Okay.
And Commissioner Meyer, you had a comment? Commissioner Meyer?
Sorry. Yes. First, I would just like to enthusiastically second your suggestion about clean energy, you know, inspired space around around your project. Commissioner Smiley had to leave, but I think one thing that she would probably like to see is to have your roof space well used in the diagram. So far, there's nothing on that. So that seems to me like an opportunity to demonstrate some solar energy or or green space or something else there. And then one other suggestion that I just wanted to make in regard to the parking, I mean, first, it'd be really nice to have it structured, I think, in the back or on the north side would would make sense for it. And then maybe move the building closer to Marshall. I know you have that, sir, but still seems like there's space to move it closer to the street. The last suggestion I wanted to make is just, you know, one thing that you could do if you're if you're not going to do structured parking for whatever reason, is you could, you know, grade the soil appropriately so that you could build more parking in the future if the demand actually materialized to the levels that you think. But I would start out by building, you know, a smaller amount. That's just a guess. I'll take on that. Anyway, that's all for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Meyer. And I'm not seeing, oh, yes, you may. Chad, you can respond.
Hi, this is Chad Wallach. I'm with Excel Energy. I just wanted to make a couple of comments as I've heard a lot about the parking and and a few other things that that maybe our our partners from RSP didn't didn't quite touch on. So the the occupancy, the total occupancy of the building would be right around three hundred people if at max max occupancy. And we also are planning large training rooms and multi multifunctional conference type spaces that we intend a lot of our Minneapolis employees that are located at other sites around the city would be utilizing as well. So they would be frequently frequently coming to this site for training and or large presentation type meetings in this facility. So that would require the additional parking or or more parking to make sure we can accommodate those people without having to have them go out on the city streets. We also have a series of fleet vehicles, smaller SUV type vehicles for for some employees that would be working at this building, whose vehicles would stay on site overnight and they'd be bringing their personal car to and from work. So we require a little more more extra parking for for that purpose. And then we also have 24/7 operations in this facility. So there is some shift change and overlap. So we would we would need to make sure we're accommodating for that. So that was that was that's some of the the reasoning why we why you see so much parking. And then also the reasoning, we as as has been mentioned, we can't build over that interceptor line. We have to leave some clearances for for those that easement, which makes it difficult to relocate the building further to the to the east. And then to the west, as we mentioned, it's a little bit, it's a little bit harder for or it's been discovered that we can't really build structurally on the the soil conditions to the west, which makes it hard to put a parking structure there. Certainly something we can try to look into, but just want to make sure I touched on that. And then as as it related to the EV charging stations, we're currently implementing EV charging stations at a majority of our facilities when we do new construction projects. And we are planning for more than two at this site. I think we're we're planning four with we're prepping the infrastructure for more as the demand increases for our employees at this site. So we we are planning to accommodate that, but we want to make sure the demand and the need for that is there before we install that day one.
Thank you. Commissioner Rockwell?
Yeah, I just wanted to touch base quickly. You know, I I do think bringing up the parking, this has come up a number of times over over time. And something that strikes me from the gentleman who just spoke is that a a set of scenarios that 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 you identify that drive your parking demand are actually a place where where I think there's an opportunity to reduce car travel, right? Which is if you're bringing folks in from other facilities, then Excel has an opportunity if you bring in people kind of en masse to provide transportation from facility to facility. You know, Excel's got a major office space where I would assume some folks will be coming for presentations and so on at the, you know, corner of the Green Line. And and I have absolutely no idea how many buses and I work as a transit advocate. I mean, so many buses at Nicoletten Mark II in downtown Minneapolis. And so, you know, I I assume a number of folks there don't drive their cars if they're expected to be moving around from facility to facility, having kind of a perverse incentive to bring a car in order to get to a meeting in another facility seems perverse. So I would encourage Excel to think about how it can move its employees without generating that extra surface parking, because it just it presents a massive opportunity that you could show kind of being a leader. So anyway, I just wanted to respond to that comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Rockwell. And I don't see any more comments. I'll just conclude by saying that I I appreciated that added testimony for Excel. I do actually feel afterward, knowing that there's training where people, I mean, I go to continuing education at different facilities that offer it for architects. And I I almost feel like it almost really is telling of supporting that, you know, having the various places around there as being demonstrations, demonstration, either technology demonstration things or artwork, it's something, it just seems like, I mean, my dad was an engineer and it probably isn't sort of thing he would have dragged us to his children to wander around on a Saturday and explain everything about it to us. So it just seems a zone opportunity to inspire young minds and and also to engage with people about what you're doing. I do think four chargers are is really light. I think you can check with your other corporate, you know, it's a corporate campus, you can check with other corporate campuses around the metro and see that there four is just, I mean, even Target stores have more than than four these days. So I would say for what you guys do and for what you're asking for parking, it seems as though maybe you need to get ahead of it. It's almost if people are going to drive, drive vehicles that are more sustainable, it would be a way to incentivize that almost, knowing that they could get their car charged while at work and not have to constantly try to see if the stalls open or not, which is I it is from what I hear is the case at many corporate campuses that don't put in enough chargers and and making them accessible to everyone and not just the executive parking area. So I would just reiterate those two points, that parking seems to be the biggest sticking point. And so I would say maybe make some big efforts related to the environment tied into parking to counteract that. Erin, did you get your questions answered? Did you have anything else you wanted us to touch on?
Commissioner Luppi, you summed it up exactly why I wanted to make sure we ended on and talked about, but just the the discussion points, and I'm glad that that chat is here, but the discussions about solar, stone water, electric vehicles, bird safe glass, just Excel hopefully being a leader and and seeing these things. Chris Thompson, I know, has mentioned the elements, some of those public art things that they were looking to incorporate. But I I'm I'm I look forward to working with the development team and and hopefully they can bullet point all the things, the the environmental impacts that they're taking into consideration and seriously when you see it for entitlements.
Thank you very, very much, Erin, in that case. And thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you all.
All right, Commissioners, this brings us to our extra agenda item, item number eight. Commissioner Meyer had had a request regarding minutes for a planning commission meeting that we had previously occurred. Chris, would you like to kick off that discussion?
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, I I went back to the minutes to look up the votes on the minimum lot size requirement amendment, which was, you know, I presented more than one of them and they're not documented. I mean, that that's not for the minutes that were up for vote at the last meeting, but there were other votes in that one that weren't documented. And so I asked staff about it. And I I guess the practice has been that they don't document votes that fail. They only document things that pass, which that's certainly not how the park board or other organizations that I've been involved in do things. And I think the votes that fail are often some of the most interesting ones. You know, the contested votes are the ones where you really, where I feel the public should really know how how people voted. And I don't think that they should have to go back and watch hours of videos to be able to find that. I think that should be the the function of our minutes to document that. So I just would like us to start documenting at a minimum every contested vote that we take.
Kimberly, would you mind touching up, giving us, I guess, because I don't know if any clerks are on the call right now, to kind of update us on staff perspective regarding this?
So we try to maintain consistency with the way that the boards and commissions and the council committees work citywide. We are one group that is not staffed by the clerk's office currently. However, we are going to have some changes coming up with that, starting in January 2021. So I believe it would be best for us to hold off on this conversation for now, as there might be a number of things that change about the structure of the way our meetings are clerked. And we could include this in part of the discussions going forward as to which things are going to be changing and how.
Thank you, Kimberly. Yeah, I am, Chris, I I personally, I see why, as somebody who's been a secretary on boards and commissions before, I can see this appeal. I also know that in the past, when I would take super, super, super detailed minutes for like my neighborhood housing committee and whatnot, it seemed as though the it's not even just the vote that, you know, that would would explain things. It's almost that would almost maybe be misleading because people don't understand why somebody voted against something or for something, but more the rationale behind it. So I mean, on one hand, I you're what you argue makes complete sense. And on the other hand, lacking context, it almost sets up a weird narrative of why did they vote no and assumptions rather than having to listen to the hearing where you kind of can understand the conversation. So I I guess I'm I'm fine waiting till January, when the clerks make their recommendations for how they're going to proceed with the commission. But I think you raised an interesting point. Does anybody else have a question or comment, Commissioner Marwa?
Sorry, yes, I can say it on the record. I think that that makes sense to me. And thank you, Commissioner Meyer, for bringing that to our attention. I sometimes have to check Wedge Live to see how the vote went.
Yeah, exactly. I had to go back and do, I had to go back, I had to go back to Wedge Live. That was the more efficient way to to find how the votes went. Then I did not, you know, go back and sit through the video. I mean, so, you know, Commissioner Luppi, your point is is well taken about about the context of things. And, you know, if if people have the time to spend hours to get the full context, that is the better way. But I feel that the minutes should be the more efficient way for people who don't have that time to get just the the fundamental information. And, you know, if if we want to add, you know, more about what rationale was stated when people made their votes, I mean, that is something that I know some organizations do, but makes it more work intensive for the staff and makes it challenging for them to decide what to include and what not to include. I think that's very difficult for them to do. But they should be able to, I mean, it's fairly straightforward to just document the facts of who voted which way on on motions. And I I think that basic information should be included.
Yeah, I I agree, Commissioner Meyer. I think it would be a really bizarre way to try and draw the line. And I I do concur that it would be much more reliable for people to get their facts from actual minutes and not bloggers. I do think maybe it might be relevant, just as a thing to suggest to the clerks in their consideration or discussion, is just maybe when listing the motions, maybe just provide the timestamp almost on the video that they can go back to. That way people did want to get context. It's, you know, especially when we have five hour long meetings, it'd be good to know that it happened at, you know, hour two forty seven minutes into it or whatever. So I I just want to say there's there's probably more than one way to do it. And I I hope the clerks are and they they are going to share their expertise and weigh in on the best efficient way to do it that actually provides transparency and information to the population. Commissioner Rockwell, did you have a comment or question?
Yeah, I think I I would be wary of putting too much information into the minutes just because I think it, one, it's sort of a burden to keep track of during the meeting. And two, I think thinking of the minutes as a as kind of a table of contents for the fact that the video, you know, the meetings are recorded. So I think recording the votes makes sense to me. I think getting into too much more detail doesn't. I have searched for things in our videos and, you know, when we're at City Hall, the banner always reads what agenda item we're on under the banner and you know the votes happen towards the end of the that section. And so it's actually pretty easy to find things when you dig up the video. But but I do think pulling out those votes matters. I, you know, and I think I think as we think about what our goals are, I I do think it's important to remember that sort of how we keep track of some of this stuff influences a little bit sort of how political the body is seen or not seen, how we are seen as a group of individuals or how we're seen as a body. I'm not passing any judgment one way or another. You know, we are a sort of funny organization. We have a number of folks who are elected officials on the body. We have a number of folks who, you know, are sort of practicing in the fields of design development, et cetera. And so I just want to keep that in mind as we as we think about how we kind of frame the pos, frame the commission publicly, that we, you know, that there are sort of implications on how political or apolitical we are as a as a body. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner Rockwell. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Meyer, either you froze, okay, go there now. All right, well, I don't see any further comments. Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Can we get an update from if Kimberly's still here about what passed? Can we get an update from, if Kimberly's still here, about what passed on Tuesday in the council?
Honestly, I think the best way for everyone to get that summary is to just go to limbs. The actions are in there. There were eight of the planning commission's changes that were adopted by the biz committee. There were a number that weren't, I can't remember how many total changes were made. But the most concise way to see it is to really go into the limbs actions. Jason and Janelle and the rest of the code development team are still working furiously to get the final version of the text prepared to submit to the clerk's office in time for full city council next Friday. But built form did pass. Like I said, with, it was, you know, I think maybe 20 minutes or so of discussion. And the amendments that were up on the screen weren't necessarily easy to follow. So just to save time here tonight, you don't need to listen to me talk for 20 minutes about what all the changes were. But I just direct you to go into limbs for the summary of Tuesday's meeting, and you can see line by line what the changes were.
Okay. It sounds like they did not deliberate to our level of deliberation.
They did not. I think there were three different council members who were involved in making motions and changes to the work that was done by this group. And a huge thank you from Councilmember Schrader to the Planning Commission for all the work that you did and all the hours and hours that were spent reviewing the built form regulations. So I know he's not here tonight, but he did express his sincere thanks on the record on Tuesday as well, as do I, because it was a huge lift. So thank you all.
What I'm hearing is our eight hours of dedication allowed them to, to really expedite it in 20 minutes. So our, our hard work and heavy lifting and lack of seeing our family. So good, good job.
I think there were hours and hours of meetings outside of that meeting for them to understand and explanations. And there's also a full subcommittee of the council that met every Monday for several months to go over all of the work. So.
Here, I was just remarking on our own brilliance, but never mind. Okay. Anything, anything else, Commissioners?
I'll move to adjourn.
Okay, Rockwell makes the motion. Can I get a second?
Second, Olson.
Oh, I'm going to give that one to Olson. Olson, seconds. I'm going to do a roll call. It's your opportunity, Chris. All right, Commissioner Rockwell.
All right.
Commissioner Caprini had to leave. Commissioner Smiley had to leave. Commissioner Marwa?
Aye.
Commissioner Meyer?
Aye.
Not abstaining. Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader, Commissioner Sweets?
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, everybody. Good meeting.
Yeah, good to see you.